Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to the, was it October 13th?
It's still on.
It's what?
I think that, oh. I thought the door was closed.
There we go. Welcome to the October 13th Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Kiss, can you lead us, please?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every single justice for all.
Heard my name.
And the first one we have is the Admin Office proclaim October 2015 as National Head Start Awareness Month.
And we have Sheila. Hi Sheila. So, can you go?
I can do that. So, in 1965 President Johnson launched Project Head Start as an eight-week summer project to give low-income children needed skills before entering kindergarten. For 50 years Head Start has given children and families the tools to succeed by ensuring high-quality education, access to health services, and to social services. The program represents a critical investment in the education of our youngest children. For over 30 years, the Resource Connection has provided Head Start services in Calaveras County, and children birthed to five-years-old and their families receive quality services in a variety of program options countywide. The program provides not only growth opportunities for the children but also their families. Parents gain skills through volunteering in the classroom and other areas in the program and are provided many leadership opportunities. While the program has a Board of Directors, it is also governed through a Parent Policy Council where parents are responsible for the overall provisions of the program. With the skills gained through the program, many parents later return as employees, and in fact approximately 35 percent of our current employees at the Resource Connection Head Start program are former or current parents. And I, as a former Head Start parent and now director, can testify that Head Start works, and I would like to thank you for recognizing our program.
You're welcome. Thank you, Kelly Gerald, she just shoved it right in there. So, this is a proclamation declaring October 2015 as National Head Start Awareness Month. Whereas the National Head Start program is celebrating its 50th year, and whereas in the 50 years since its inception, Head Start has improved the lives of more than 32 million children and their families. And whereas the local Resource Connection has been providing Head Start services since 1984. And whereas in those 31 years, they have provided services to almost 6,000 children and families, and whereas our local Head Start program focuses not only the child but the child's family. Whereas parents and guardians are offered many opportunities for the program that includes but is not limited to volunteering in the classroom, parent education workshops, resources and referrals, and the opportunity to serve as a policy council member. And therefore proclaiming that Calaveras County Board of Supervisors hereby declares October 2015 as National Head Start Awareness Month after this vote.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Oliva. All in favor?
Public comment.
Public comment, sorry. All in favor? Public comment. That was a public comment. Okay. That's five circles. And you both thank very much for your honor.
All right. Good day. Free country, good day for compliments. 2015 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Good morning. My name is Dana Fial with the Calaveras County District Attorney's Office. This is Celeste Motta from the Resource Center, ruling the crisis. And we would like you to recognize October 2015 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Ms. Motta has some statistics for you and some goodies.
Okay. In the fiscal year 2014 through 2015, we provided 2,236 bed nights to victims of domestic violence. Of those bed nights, that's a person that's in a bed for at least one night. Of those, 39 of them were there as a total of every night. They're different people that make up the 2,336. Of those, 39 for 2014, 2015, 25 were adults, and 14 were children. There was also a total of 64 victims that were put into shelter. There were the 39 total, and there was 25 that were put into motel whether it was for one night or a couple nights. Also, I've got a breakdown of our domestic violence victims by your districts. District 1, there was a total of 128 clients, secondary clients were 43, and that was a total of 171. District 2, 56 clients with secondary clients being six, with a total of 62. District 3, 21 clients, six being secondary, 27 as a total. Angels Camp Murphys. District 4, 52, 29 secondary clients being a total of 81. Copper, District 5, Copper Springs Valley, Milton, Jenny Lynn, 27 total clients, secondary clients four, with a total of 31. Altogether, our total was 599 clients for last year. And the year prior to that, the fiscal year prior to that, was 555, so our numbers are going up. So as supervisors, I'd like to have you, I'm going to give you some pins and have you go out there and hand out pins and get into the community and make people aware of what's going on in our community. And also, I would like to invite all of you who haven't been over to our center, to come over to our center, talk to our staff, and see what we do there, and take a little tour.
Thank you.
I have a question. I have a question. When you talk about secondary client, what does that represent?
The secondary client would be anyone that was affected by the first client, whether it's a child or a family member.
Okay. Thank you.
It's whether we're doing, sometimes we meet with them also, and the family members.
Okay.
Can I have these two lovely young ladies come up and join me, please? Before we start, I'd like to stress my honor personally in working with both of these young ladies. I think they do an outstanding job, the organization does, and the sacrifices made are far beyond call of duty. This is a proclamation recognizing October 2015 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence such as the lies of Americans of all ages leave a devastating impact on women, men, and children of every background and circumstance. And whereas children who live in a home where there is domestic violence also suffer abuse, negligence, and high rates. And whereas studies have found that children are more likely to intervene when they witness severe violence against a parent, which can place the child at great risk of injury or death. And whereas domestic violence calls are some of the most dangerous for law enforcement to respond to. And the Resource Connection Calaveras Crisis Center provided shelter for 64 women and children victims and provided assistance with 84 domestic violence restraining orders in the past 12 months. And whereas only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this heinous crime. Do you entertain a motion, Mr. Chairman?
So moved.
Is it a motion by Supervisor Kearney?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Wright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comment, please. Okay.
Therefore, let it be resolved that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim October 2015 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Be it further resolved that the Board and Supervisors encourages all citizens to honor their important work done by domestic violence programs and their active support and participation in the programs to eliminate the use of personal and institutional violence against men and women, passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Calaveras, State of California, this 13th day of 2015.
Right. Great job.
As a former member of the Advisory Board meeting, I'm sorry, the Women's Crisis Center Advisory Board, I can say that this has been going on forever and that what you just read Supervisor Oliva, what you read at the very end, we should all just continue to remind ourselves every day, because you're right, it happens behind closed doors. There was a time when our Crisis Center was called the Women's Crisis Center, but we realized that men are affected as well, and so it is absolutely all boots on the ground. So we all, it's a community thing, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Marty. Okay, so any other further public comments on that issue?
This is your.
Yeah, the last one.
So now we have, we have Admin put together proclamation recognizing Calaveras County students for attending the American Legion Boys and Girls State Day. It was more than a day, wasn't it? It was like a week, was it?
Yeah.
So could you come forward, please?
All the boys and girls staters, open their line, line up.
Before we get into the proclamation portion, I'd like to acknowledge some people that are behind me. Barney LaRue, who has been with, Barney, stand up, please, who has been with Boy State over 40 years and is only the fourth person to be inducted into the Hall of Fame of Boy State in California. Thank you very much, Barney. Then we have Mike Chanto, who is the adjutant for District 11, which is a part of our district that we belong to. Mike? And we have a counselor from Linden High School, Pam Knapp, who is an incredible supporter of Boy State.
Pam? Thank you.
Yeah, she's just incredible. Her dad served in the service and she is just, just a real supporter of Boy State. I have passed out to the board members a little history about the American Legion, how it got started and what have you, and how many boy staters came to the Boy State this year in Sacramento, and how many girl staters came, and I would be remiss. Kiss Anderson is in charge of the Girl State in our post, and our commander, Dave Halyer, was the person who was handling things for the Boy State. I will probably be doing that next year. So, that's about it. I would like to thank the Chair of the Board, whose idea this was to do this, and I applaud him for that, acknowledging these young folks. They were there this summer in June for, as 11th graders, and they were selected the best of the best. And I'd like one girl and one boy to speak, and I'm going to be the chooser. I would like you to speak when we're finished, and I would like you to speak, because your brother is already at the Naval Academy, and she wants to go to the Naval Academy. Okay, go ahead.
But before they do that, George, would you mind if all the Legion members introduced themselves?
Sure.
So they've all served and we owe them a lot.
Sure.
My name is Lou DeManda. I'm past Commander of American Legion Post 1 on 2 Valley Springs. I'm a combat veteran of Vietnam and Panama.
Welcome home. Thank you.
I'm Barney LaRue. I served in the Korean War as a corpsman in the Navy and Marine Corps, attached to the Marine Corps.
Welcome home, Doc.
I think most of you know me, Kiss Anderson, and I'm the chairman of the Girl State program, and I've done this for 10 years, and I congratulate all of you young people.
My name is Mike Yanto. I'm a Vietnam-era veteran in air operations over the country in B-52, Strategic Air Command, currently serving as a district adjutant and past commander of Post 376 in Glencoe. And I want everyone to recognize the future of our country. They look pretty bright. Thank you.
Welcome home. Thank you.
I'm George Frye. I'm a U.S. Army veteran. I served in Europe. I was attached to Second General Hospital, and I had a TDY 90-day tour at Checkpoint Charlie in West Berlin.
Thank you for having me. I'm Pam Knapp. I'm the Career Center Director and Counselor at Linden High School, and this does serve a very special place in my heart. My father served for 30 years in the Navy, serving in World War II, Korea, and Vietnam, and we lost him at age 91 in July of last year, and I just was able to take his remains to Arlington and have them interned on August 31st, and that was quite an honor with a full military honors burial. So, thank you, and congratulations to the students.
Thank you for being here. Okay. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go ahead and read the declaration. So proclamation recognizing these young people for attending the American Legion Boys and Girls State Program. And did I have your names, each of you? Riley, Warren.
Samantha Thompson.
Vanessa Gray.
Joseph Guerra.
Joseph.
And the ones that aren't here are Andrew Alfred, Alyssa, yeah, Pauline Meyer, Owen McGrath, Michael Strickles, Juan Jose Gonzalez, Celeste Bolton, and Brandon Pollard. That's how many folks, how many of these young people went to this program. So whereas the American Legion believes there is no better way to assure the survival of our democratic society and state than to train our young people in the ideals and objectives of American government. And whereas the American Legion Boys and Girls State Program is among the most respected and selective educational programs of civics instruction for juniors in high schools, for juniors in high school. And whereas during the week-long program, Calaveras County's young citizens learn how to, learn how city, county, and state governments function by actually doing the job themselves. And whereas, and whereas Boys and Girls State Program focuses on participation and personal experience in a modest state, complete with governing bodies and elected political officials designed to mirror the structure and operation of the state of California. And whereas Boys and Girls State Program encourages participants to identify with democratic beliefs, organizations, organized campaigns, seek elective office, write legislation, debate judicial arguments, and utilize preliminary procedure and become effective community leaders. And whereas Boys and Girls State Program exposes students to the rights, privileges, duties, and responsibilities of an American citizen. And whereas for 78 years after its first introduction in 1937, Boys and Girls State Program continues to demonstrate its excellence in teaching students, students the importance of our American way of life. And just a little addition here, the folks at American Legion keep this alive, it's a very important function, and I certainly appreciate your recognition for that. I've got the opportunity to talk to a few of these young people, and I'm a little bit worried about my reelection in the future, so really good.
They're going to be off your campaign today.
So, can I please have a motion by the Board?
So moved.
So, I have a motion by Supervisor Kearney.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Ponzi. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. None? Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors, County of Calaveras hereby recognizes these young folks for attending the American Legion Boys and Girls State Program, passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors, County of Calaveras, State of California, on the 13th day of October 15th. So, each of you can speak if you'd like. I don't care what George says. So, yes. We will.
I just wanted to first start things off by saying thank you for sponsoring all of us. Truly a pleasure. Secondly, we like, we learned what goes on in local government, and I got to participate in it, and it was just really neat to be with a bunch of people who are also going to be the future leaders of this great country we have. So it was just an amazing experience to be with all these other people who are truly passionate about keeping this amazing place we have and keep it running.
It was really interesting, the first day they showed up, everybody didn't know what to expect. On the closing ceremonies, he came up to me and he said, "Wow, what a week it was."
First off, I just wanted to thank you guys for this honor, and I can't stress enough to thank the American Legion for sponsoring us and allowing us to take this trip. My American Girl State was one of the best weeks probably of my life, and I have made memories and learned so many things that I will cherish throughout my life.
So I'd like to first off, I'd like to start off at first thanking all of you guys and all of you for giving us this opportunity to be on. This, it was an amazing opportunity to go down south, to learn about local government, state government, county government. It was an amazing process to learn about and very grateful for the opportunity to have.
First of all, I want to thank everyone in the room, not only for sitting at the Boy State but, or Girl State, but to have us here today to be recognized for the great party event, and I don't think Ms. Knapp, because the morning of she made me write my resume no matter what, and she told me I was going to do the interview, and it was a great experience, and I'm glad that she made it through.
I'd like to thank all of you. That was, I mean, it was an amazing experience. That's, that's not easy to support financially, it meant a lot. The friendships I made there were amazing, so, and especially government factories own them, were great. So, thank you.
Public comments?
I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for recognizing these young men and women. They are truly the future of our country. Thank you so much.
Allison Gall, Taxpayer Association, we are really pleased with this. In some ways, this could be more important than practically anything else we've ever done in this room, because this is the future of our country, and it's also the future of how government will unfold. We, our Taxpayer Association would like to provide a copy of the Constitution to all 12 of the youth, and also we appreciate this post as helping to co-sponsor a Constitution contest on the Constitution. And we could do more of that, we'd be sailing into a bright future of a free society. Thank you.
Just one final comment for the supervisors to give you some idea of the importance of Boys and Girls State. At the military academies, as they're screening for candidates, if there's a dead heat or a tie between two candidates, and one of those candidates has Boy State or Boy's Girl on their resume, that person will be selected over the other person. It ranks right up there with things like Eagle Scouts. It's not a little deal, it's a big deal for these kids, and I can congratulate each one of you. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Just like to also thank the American Legion for reaching out to beyond our county borders to Linden. You know, it's important that we, we have these relationships with our neighbors, and you know, bringing the, some of the young folks from there into the same arena as the folks here is a really great experience, and from all of the state too, so I am honored actually to present this to you guys. Thank you for staying on course with your right to, thank you very much.
We want to take some pictures outside. Outside.
Okay, so we'll move on to public comments. Any item of interest to the public that is within subject matter jurisdiction and the board is not posted on the consent agenda, consent or regular agendas may be discussed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency of the board, by the Board of If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to consent, to the consent agenda. If the public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued at the conclusion of the regular agenda in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. Public comment, please.
Peter Ray, General In, and I'm glad to see things are settling down finally, and I want to thank all of you for working your butt off, putting a pain in the rear, and so on. What I'd like to ask you is that, please do take a look in a gift horse in the mouth. We had some bad experience with certain federal agencies in prior years, and, but we do have some distinguished attorneys over here. Do take a look at, when you have something, other conditions and everything. We still, well, I got nothing to lose, I don't have to be polite. FEMA... There's some debate about it because some money comes from out of state for local elections. So that, if nothing else, we will help them out. But I want to thank you for your work, guys. I know it's been one hell of a hectic month, but we got something to look forward to. Hopefully when all the dust settles, that we can take some wisdom out of it, how it can be improved. We're not gonna change anything, but we can be more prepared for certain things. I don't think this would be too early to get into details, but once the motions settle down a little bit, things get a little bit normal, that we can do something to minimize of wildfires that, for the safety of our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.
Good morning. My name is Rosemary Wilson, and I live in Moke Hill. I can't live in Mountain Ranch because my home is leveled. I did want to comment that there are four ties, people are wearing, four of you are wearing ties on the board, and that, that's something that I've never seen quite so many people wear at a local meeting. We, Paul.
Peter.
Peter had mentioned about insurance companies not doing their, not doing the best by their, their clients. I just wanted to balance that, not that I came here specifically to say it, but my claims adjuster, Chris Muller from Farmers, has been very good so far with me, and it's not often that you, you get up and give your claims adjuster a hug, but that's, that's what happened. Last Thursday, I bumped into Chris as he was coming back from the emergency center, just going to it with a packet of crisps and sandwich in hand, and I was on my way up to my property to meet with an attorney to look over the, the charred mess. We had a good meeting, but it was, it was interrupted by, by someone that I was not expecting to see up there. It's not often that a Board of Supervisor, Supervisor comes onto your property. It's even more unusual when a Board of Supervisor, Supervisor from Amador County comes onto your property, and I was, I parted my conversation with Brian Ornetto, saying that I would be sure to tell Chris Wright that he'd been snooping around. I'm not so sure that Brian realized before him that I would choose to convey that to, to Chris, and, but there I was talking, talking burnt trees, value of trees, and there's a lot on eight and a half acres. When Brian Ornetto comes up in his truck, representing himself, snooping around, looking for land with timber, timber to fell. I have his phone number here if anyone likes it, I won't give it out just now, but I do have his phone number. I recognize Brian from the days that I went with Sarah Johnson up into Amador County in the Board of Supervisors for Parkinson's Awareness Month, and he remembered at least Sarah from those meetings. I also went, went along. My, my lawyer has never seen such a thing, that an out-of-state supervisor on a Thursday afternoon, so it was presumably during business hours, would be representing himself, driving maybe 150 feet, I don't know, it's a, it's a good driveway that I've got, and that's still intact. But I was up at the site telling him that he'd better watch out because one of the trees might fall on top of him, and I wasn't sure how my liability would go. But I just thought you'd like to know, and again, I've got Brian's number, I just think it's out of place that he should have done that without, without informing me, without arranging to meet with me. Thank you. Just come up on the property and take a look around for what trees he can cut from his adjoining county. Thank you.
Public, public comments?
Allison Gallant Taxpayer Association, we are, we are real thankful for the work you've done, and also for all the volunteers that, that have been helping, and especially the, in our private sector that have been going to my fund account, and, and one of the things that we talked about before, and which we think is important, is that the Board of Supervisors take essential effort in investigating the, the fire, and, and it's important to, to determine what could be done, what could have been done to, to save those homes, or maybe arrest the fire sooner than possible, than it was, and so that if we do have another fire, we will not be repeating the same thing again. And, and this is important to go beyond and include all the different other levels of government involved. And, and we piggyback on, on Peter's comments about FEMA. FEMA has not done very well to the property rights in this county in the past, so we want to, we encourage you to make sure when, when this is all over, that the property owners have their, their rights intact, that they, that are treated fairly by all levels of government, and if such is not the case, that you take the lead and try to correct Also, this should be done in sunshine, and that don't mean that a committee that you might form would have to deliberate in a public forum, but that the information, the reports that, that come about should not be in secret, it should be public, so that in the future, the people can, can know what's, what happened, and, and look to not repeating mistakes that were made in the past. Thank you.
Okay. Any more public comments?
Good morning, I'm Bill McManus, and today I'll be speaking for the Calaveras Project and Calm, which is a statewide organization of citizens against legalization of marijuana. We know that in a couple days, we're gonna have a presentation, we don't have much information about it from, I think it's RC, RC. We don't know what they're gonna be recommending, but our state group has gone through a lot of this analysis already. As Calaveras County attempts to recover from a horrible disaster here, in our opinion, we're afraid and sorry to inform the citizens of Calaveras County that another disaster is on the horizon, and that would be AB 266, which has been passed and signed by the governor. Essentially, it's the legalization of recreational marijuana with a medical name. I've given you some handouts of what our analysis has been. We've tried to distill AB 266 and its evil twin sisters, AB 243 and Senate Bill 643, to get some of the salient points to the surface, because you get lost in the documents. I've given Mrs. Osborne copies of AB 266, AB 243, and SB 643. I just don't have a printer capable of printing out that much paper, so that you can all have a copy, I'm sure you probably do, but you can get a copy from Ms. Osborne if you want to cross-reference our document against the actual text of the law. If you'll take a look at, well, first of all, AB 266 creates one of the largest bureaucracies in the history of state of California, called the Bureau of Medical Marijuana Regulation, falls under the Department of Consumer Affairs, which is scary enough by itself. If you flip to page two, you will see the list of licenses that are now gonna be required or available to grow medical marijuana. If you look at some of these license types, you'll see acres and acres of marijuana allowed to be cultivated, which hardly keeps it in the category of medical. You can, and I'm just giving you the highlights here. If you go on down to cultivation limitations and vertical integration, you'll see what a rat's nest that is, and someone's gonna have to figure that out. If you don't do it, the state will. And then we get to the part that I like the best, which are local permits required. In passing these, this trifecta of horror, they did not attempt to challenge the state constitution, which means that land use still resides in the jurisdiction. So you're either all in with AB 266, or you're all out. If you attempt to straddle it, the county's gonna find itself in, with just, just a boatload of trouble, because of the regulations and ordinances that you will be required to come up with to integrate 266. The next page, there's a, a really disturbing part called the cultivation licensing, which, you know, we had that, we took a pass at that back in April, of what we were gonna do with, with marijuana growing in this county. The board decided to do nothing, and of course, we saw how that turned out. So you still, within the text of 266, you still have the ability to do that. Now we have, for-profit cultivation is going to be recognized in 266. Delivery services for marijuana to places in the county and elsewhere is going to be legal. They've reduced the clearance, the sensitive use area for schools down to 600 feet in the state law. And we have special agreements made with SEIU that all employees working in the marijuana industry will have the right to bargain collectively. So SEIU was a big supporter of 266, and that's what we'll, that's what you'll get, is a bunch of union workers selling marijuana. Okay. In any case, I see, I see Calaveras County changing so much with, if, 266 is law, and as I had mentioned before, we're either all in or all out. Many rural counties don't have the resources or expertise to successfully deal with ordinances and law enforcement, you're not gonna get any money upfront from the state, and we just hope that you take or consider the other option, which is to ban marijuana from Calaveras County, make us unique in the state in a good way. Everyone else is gonna be selling it and driving it around.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, thank you.
Any more public comments? So.
Allow me to introduce myself to you folks that do not know me, I'm Tony McNeil, I'm the program manager that's been blessed to be here with Samaritan's Purse, operating in Calaveras County. We are ending our deployment here, this week will end us up. I wanted to let the board know and, and thank you all personally, from the chair all the way through the county here, Mr. Boitz or Mr. Corvitz that we've been working with closely, we want to thank you for that. But to let the board know just a little bit where we're at, we have had 225 of the residents here in Calaveras County, County, seek our assistance, and we are finishing that up this week. We have put in to date 7,636 volunteer hours, that's of this morning, that we'll be turning these hours over to the officials here to go into the share pay that you all are gonna be hearing so much about with FEMA, so we'll be providing that. I want to give the board encouragement, as I talked with Mr. Edson about, the people of this community are hurting, we finished our part of this deployment, when we go home, they're still gonna be hurting for months and months to come. I encourage you all to stay involved with them personally, they put you there in those positions, they trust you in those positions, and they're gonna be seeking your counsel on that, so we want to give you encouragement. I wanted to take just a moment and say thank you, on behalf of Samaritan's Purse. Yes, we are based out of North Carolina, Franklin Graham is my boss, many of you will remember Billy Graham, I'm sure, that's his son. We came here, we, we deploy all over the United States to these disasters, whether it be fire, flood, tornadoes, hurricanes, whatever natural disaster it is, our sole purpose is to come in and provide direct assistance to the homeowners. We have been blessed to do that, we have found many, many personal items that we have returned to them. More importantly, we're giving them and portraying that message of hope, that there is light at the end of the tunnel, we're directing them to the city and county officials to seek what they need in the future, and just know that we go with heavy hearts. The hardest part of the deployment for me is leaving, going back to North Carolina from nowhere where I'm from, I never forget the wonderful people we meet, but I want to give you encouragement, I know that they're left in good hands, that you guys, each and every one, care deeply about the people of Calaveras County, I think they're blessed to have you there in those positions, but thank you, God bless you, and if I can be of any assistance, like I told Mr. Edson, we want to be the relationship that heaven forbid something like this happen in the future, that you can call up and say, "Tony, we need your all's help." So I hope it's been a good experience for you guys, and please know that you'll remain in our prayers, so thank you for your time.
Aye, sir. Alrighty then, any other public comments? So we're gonna move on to our consent agenda. The consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-consensual, and will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Does any member of the public wish to remove an item from consent agenda?
Nine, ten, eleven, please.
Alright, anybody else? Wait, any other public, wish, any other members of the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Okay. How about the board? Number six, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Number six?
Number six.
future that you can call up and say, "Tony, we need your all's help." So I hope it's been a good experience for you guys, and please know that you'll remain in our prayers. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
All righty then, any other public comments? So we're going to move on to our consent agenda. The consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-consensual, and will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Does any member of the public wish to remove an item from consent agenda?
Nine, ten, and eleven, please.
Anybody else? Wait. Any other public wish, any other members of the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Okay. How about the board? Number six, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Number six?
Number six.
And number thirteen? Okay. Any other items to be removed from the consent agenda? None? All right, so can I have a motion on the remainder, please?
So moved.
Have a motion by supervisor Ponzi?
Second.
Second by supervisor Wright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, we have number six, Chris.
Yeah, I just wanted more information on what that means.
Basically, if you remember at the last, I think it was the last board meeting, we did the agreements that were required for mutual aid for law enforcement. This is for other agencies. As the boards are aware, we're, we have received mutual aid through CalOES from multiple other agencies for various departments, and we need to have an agreement with those agencies so that they can submit their cost and get reimbursed through CDA or the federal grant. So, this is just a template for those agreements and to authorize the CAO to sign those agreements.
Any public comments?
I'm just curious, how many mutual aid contracts are we going to be signing?
Actually, at this point, we don't know. We're still, we have numerous ones with, for environmental health, we've had requests from Public Works, we've had requests from the Auditors' Office. And usually when the mutual aid comes, they'll come from a week at a time, so depending on what counties have done, we will do those mutual aid agreements with the counties that have provided that support.
And so then we, and so we pay them for that service?
So, in the agreement is when we get reimbursed through federal and state grants, then we reimburse the county, those counties providing mutual aid.
Okay. And this is just for counties?
It's normally counties that provide the mutual aid.
Or state agency.
State agencies, yeah.
Government.
All those requests go through CalOES, and they go out and look at the counties that are willing to provide help with those services, pretty much like law enforcement did during the response effort.
Right. And do you have any idea how many people responded? I mean, I remember when the fire was happening, and you saw people from all over the state, like down in LA and up from Northern California, it seemed like, I mean, it was crazy.
And we will talk a little bit about that in the later presentation with the update, but I know environmental health have had help from faraway LA. We've had El Dorado County, Stanislaus County, San Joaquin County. So, it's whoever has the available resources and willing to loan them to us.
And so we'll continue to see this type of mutual aid during the recovery effort?
Over the next few weeks. It really depends. We'll be seeing the mutual aid coming to an end over the next few weeks, and we'll be looking at alternate methods to try and assist current staff with the multitude of duties through emergency, what's considered emergency extra hires or contracted work that will be reimbursed under the funding sources.
Thank you. So on the resolution here, it says, "The county emergency manager is the operational area emergency management mutual aid coordinator." Who is that?
It's the chair of the board.
Okay, thank you. So, and so, am I supposed to like take a look at these?
The attached agreement is with it and with the board's approval, as if the board chair will recall, he also delegated that authority to the county administrative officer.
For the purchase?
For purchasing and contracting. But this is in essence asking the board for that authority. If the board chair or the board prefers to have the board chair sign those agreements, we can make that change.
Okay. Any other comments?
Make a motion to approve.
We have public comments on this? Okay. So we have a motion by supervisor Ponzi?
Second.
Second by supervisor Wright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, can I, Chair, I wanted to talk about 12 more than 13. Am I making a mistake there? So do we need to do a... You could pull 12, Chris. Okay. I object. Well, we did, huh?
Yeah, with the consent agenda.
You could do a motion for reconsideration of 12, though.
Well, I'd like to do a motion for reconsideration of 12, please.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
So a motion by supervisor Wright for reconsideration, a motion, and a second by supervisor Ponzi, and five, zero.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
It's all right. It's been a tough couple of weeks.
It's been nothing, it's pleasant.
All right, so Joe, number nine, please.
Nine and 10 deal with agriculture, action authorizing the board to execute non-renewal for California land conservation contract 247 is number nine. Is this due to non-compliance or sale of property? If it's due to non-compliance, is this the start of now the enforcement of compliance or non-compliance with the Williamson Act in Calaveras County? If you want to address both of them at the same time, the same questions apply to number 10.
Now, we can do them separately. Okay. So do we have areas? Okay.
Kevin Wright, agricultural commissioner. Nine and 10 are slightly different. Number nine, the notice of non-renewal was issued because the property was sold, and when a section of the property was sold, and by the sale of that section, the two parcels became less than 100 acres, or less than 50 acres in one case. And so, the contract was non-renewed. Now, since we have different owners for the contract, they will have to, if they want to, reapply for a contract on their own if they qualify. So that's why that one was. Number 10, Mr. Tuckerman didn't have, he didn't submit production reports to the county for a number of years. We gave him opportunity, I talked to him, and sent him a letter, and he also said that he didn't have any agricultural production on his property. And he said, "Other than timber, and timber doesn't qualify." So that's the reason why he was non-renewed. And to answer your other question, I would say in both these cases that, yes, that we're looking at these act preserves a little closer, and they are the beginning of the enforcement. Not that it hasn't been done, in the past, there's been quite a few that have been non-renewed for the same reasons. Hope that answers your question.
Okay. Public comments? Do we wish to speak on this at all? Good.
I'll make a motion to approve number nine and 10.
Did you say 10 was a little different than nine?
The difference was in one, there was actually a split up of the property that was under the contract, and in the other one, it was totally based on the fact that there wasn't any agricultural production.
Okay. Okay. I'll second the motion. All right. So, a motion by supervisor Ponzi to approve...
Nine and 10?
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, but we have to have public comment on number 10.
Oh.
Any public comment on item number 10? Joe?
Wrong, which one now? Eleven?
Ten.
Ten? Well, 10 was, I asked the same questions. He answered the questions.
I know, but I still have to ask for public comment.
Okay, okay. And 10 is, 10 is basically because of non-production. I'd like to know how fast they're going to be moving on this non-production report issues and the non-compliance with the requirements to be in the Williamson Act, because we as a county, we as citizens, taxpayers, are subsidizing, not the whole state subsidizing, we are now subsidizing our whole agriculture entity in this county. I'd also like to know, if he knows offhand, how many acres in this county are in the Williamson Act? Because I think it's now, since we've had the Butte Fire, we've had all the devastation to land and forests and everything else, it'd be interesting to know how much is in the Williamson Act of the approximately, what, 663,000 acres in Calaveras County? So that we can get an idea of what's left also for the development in Calaveras County that may not be rugged and unusable terrain. Thank you.
Since you asked... Yeah, so we can, we can answer number nine and number 10 right now, and then possibly we can, we can get staff to answer some of those questions for Joe's, all right, at a later time here, we can hook up with you. Okay. So, the motion stands, Debbie?
Yes.
Second, please.
Second.
Second by supervisor Wright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None.
This is the thing you probably dread the worst. Actually, it's going to be the worst, the worst for the property owners in Calaveras County that may have lost their properties, the banks take them over, now it's nothing, it's nothing but more debt. How much more money can the county draft, or I'll use the term draft, from this and may not get paid until the property sells, and then the new homeowner gets to pay it in a cause of price? But this is also changing your regulations to a grave effect that it's going to be, I don't know if it's good or bad, but I would ask you folks, if you have a copy of my latest code compliance unit complaint and the six pages attached, I addressed this on my property problem that I've had for 10 years, that the county under public health, safety, general welfare, and your land use laws have failed and not bothered to respond to do anything about it. So now I've used this to come forward, using all your wording and all your new regulation to bring it forward. I want to know if you are going to do something about it. Because this new law is very significant in saying, "Alleged code violations exist under Calaveras County Code 8.06.375. It shall be unlawful for any person or owner, occupant, tenant, or operator to cause or maintain a public nuisance on a premise." So, what is a public nuisance? Alleged code violations exist under Calaveras County Code 8.06.375 through a violation of Calaveras County Code 8.06.290, public nuisance. A, anything injurious or likely to become injurious to the health and safety or offensive to the census or an obstruction, pay attention, to the free use of property so as to interfere with a comfortable enjoyment of life or property. I think that's what Mr. Sagala argues all the time, is constitutional right. A enumeration of such nuisances in this chapter shall not be deemed exclusive. And it also goes on, "E, any violations of the provisions of this chapter." So, the new one comes out with 8.06, property maintenance code, public abatement, to protect the health and safety of the residents of Calaveras County through the prevention and eradication of public nuisances in the county, to ensure that all premises are maintained in a manner that protects public health and safety, to ensure that all premises are maintained in a manner that does not constitute a public nuisance, to ensure that all premises are maintained in compliance with applicable laws. I've brought many a law forward to you folks that you tend to want to ignore. This chapter is not the exclusive regulation of public nuisance. It shall supplement and be in addition to other regulating statutes or ordinances heretofore or hereinafter enacted by the state, the county, or any other legal entity or agency having jurisdiction. Structure, that which is built or construction or constructed or a portion thereof on any premise. So, there is a difference between just the concept of structure and building. An illegal water retention facility obstruction to put in bridge abutments in a bridge is a structure. Notice, without permits. This also does, has some stuff in it about permits being needed and inspections being needed. So, personally, I believe this thing is a little, I'm going to use the term violent on any property owner and violent on any potential future owner, and the banks, they're just going to pass on the deal. And you folks are going to be hiring probably because if this thing goes through, it will be caused to have you hire more than what you have, the two code enforcement officers that are overwhelmed by what they're doing now.
Thirty seconds.
So I suggest you really think this one over, and especially to my issues, because this is now back in your court. And I would like a response. Did you all receive a copy of that? Because I supplied it to county council's office, the CAO's office, or to the board, and to Public Works. So I want to be sure everybody that I personally handed this stuff out and got stamped, received it. Thank you. One other thing, when you folks make your decisions on things, please go into an extreme, elaborated discussion of what your thoughts are, why you do what you do in your vote. It would sure be helpful. Thank you.
Al Sagala, Taxpayer Association. It's good to have the laws clear and easily enforceable and respectful of the basic rights property owners have, people have. This may be a little bit over the top. I think the taxpayers would recommend that you study this a little further and invite the real estate industry, the Association of Realtors, and also title companies that would have an interest in this, to refine this a little better and try to make it more workable. This is, has a tendency to be a little bit of regulatory overkill, and there, I suspect there's probably a better way to do this that will not cause future problems. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Any board comments?
I'd just like to say that, you know, this particular introduction of this ordinance deals with abandoned and foreclosed properties. This is not deal with somebody who is living in a property. So, co-conforcement is one of those damned if you do and damned if you don't. And I believe we have been sitting here for a while with folks needing, especially staff needing a little bit more bite in regards to some of these properties, and now we have it before us. So I just want to stress that we're talking about those that are abandoned or in a foreclosure mode for this particular ordinance.
Just for clarification, please. Excuse me, I have a comment. I'm sorry, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman? I concur with Supervisor Ponte. This deals with foreclosed property. Property that's been abandoned by the original purchaser, and now the bank has responsibility to the county and to the citizens to make that property viable again. I recommend that this ordinance be reviewed in its entirety and passed by this board. Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. If I may, for clarification, the property that's in dispute in my discussions was foreclosed upon. The owner did walk away from it, and it was immediately filed upon with code enforcement. And they dithered and dallied and then ran away when State Water Resource Control Board, Water Division Chief Chuck Rich, who is now retired, made a comment in a phone call, let us handle it. We have more experience. 10 years later, well, he's gone now, but 10 years later, it's still not resolved. 10 years later, now Cal EPA is involved. The next step is going to be the federal EPA to cure the problem. Because a lawsuit is a waste of their money, my money. And you folks had, under land use, as I've expressed, the authority, the responsibility, and the enforcement powers. Thank you. If you don't want to do them, then take them out. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
I'd like to make a response to Michael's comments, which are good comments. In the foreclosure process, when payments are not made, the lender can issue a notice of default. When the notice of default is filed, there's 90 days where the property owner can reinstate the loan. After that 90-day period, then it could go to sale, and there's an additional 21 days, usually about a month. So the whole process, this foreclosure process, is about four months. And during that time, the property could be considered in bad condition or maybe derelict. But if it's being, if it's occupied by the owner, then we want to make sure that, that enforcing this law would be at the point where the property changes hands at the foreclosure sale. At the foreclosure sale, the property could either be transferred to a bidder who would bid on the property, and that would be the new property owner, or it could revert, or could go to the bank. And the bank then becomes a property owner. Now, things can be done in that area. But the way this is worded, well, to me, it seemed like it was not really clear. And that's why it'd be good to, to try to get some expert help from the industry to refine a little bit, to make sure that what you do is not gonna later have unintended consequences. Thank you.
I'm the one that researched this, and I started researching it months ago. We had many homes that were foreclosed upon, that were basically deserted, especially in the Rancho neighborhood. And then the more I researched it, it was throughout the county. The banks often holding the paper on the foreclosures were on the other side of the country, and they didn't take an interest in maintaining the properties. Consequently, there were actually websites that taught people to go in, for lack of a better term, squatters, to sit in them. And they were causing a lot of problems for our law enforcement and our code enforcement. At times, you didn't even know who they were. What this, this law, this code update does, and I didn't invent this wheel. I did discuss it with local realtors and people in the industry and talked to them first. And I also researched the laws, or the codes that other counties and municipalities are using, not only in California, but in the country. They, this will, on the foreclosure event, this will have them register their foreclosure in a foreclosure registry process with our county. There's a system of visits that they take, that they pay for, and they have to maintain it according to community standards going forward. In the past, sometimes after a house was foreclosed on nine months, law enforcement didn't even know who was living in it. They didn't know, they didn't have a clue. This puts the bank on notice. And it doesn't matter if the bank is licensed in the state of Maryland, or Delaware, or someplace of that nature. They will still be by law required to maintain the property. And if they don't, now code enforcement has a way of holding their feet to the fire, so to speak, by using this code. This is for foreclosed homes when they go into foreclosure.
The key words, going into foreclosure. Once that property changes hands and the lender owns it, it's no longer in the foreclosure process. It's not, foreclosure is behind it. We keep talking about, the thing that I'm, when it's in that foreclosure process, the ownership is with the existing owner. This is what we're talking about, is the definition of terms. And I agree with you. Once the bank or the, whatever lender owns a property, they are responsible for it. And they're responsible if there's squatters in the property or damage or, you know, vandalism, everything. They're responsible just as if any property owner is responsible. There's no doubt about that, there's no question about that. What we're talking about is the foreclosure process, which I already explained how that works. And it, my concern was not after it becomes the ownership of the lender. It's in the foreclosure process that there could be miscommunication with this. And also, I appreciate the work you've done on this, and also consulting real estate professionals and to try to make sure that, to make sure it's right. I appreciate that.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You mentioned something about that law enforcement enforcing it. Is there any way that you can communicate with Sheriff's Department that this and this building, structure, is abandoned? You can classify it as abandoned for whatever reason? And if you happen to drive by, you see any activities? So they would be aware that there's a possibility of squatters, and they can check it. That would maybe minimize the consequences of abandoned house. If you see people active in that building that you classify as an abandoned, whatever technical terms you want to use. Let the guy, when they drive by, hey, that building is abandoned. There's a bunch of partygoers going over there. And not the best intent.
Without, I'm, excuse me, Peter, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I apologize.
You don't have to, you're my supervisor, you can tell me whatever you want.
Without the passage of this code, no, there really isn't. With this code being passed.
I agree with you.
Code compliance will have a way to tell law enforcement what's going on.
Okay, that's, that's the bottom line. Is code enforcement gonna communicate with the cops?
Yeah.
Keep an eye on that. I don't care if it's volunteers or whoever. That's all I'm asking.
This is the tool to do for them to do that.
So, to satisfy what L is worried about, if you look at 8.06, or 8.06.280 foreclosure, it says, "The process by which real property subject to a deed of trust is sold to satisfy the debt of the faulty trust or borrower." So that's in the code. That's, that's in the language. That's, I guess that's the disclosure right there, right?
I guess my main point is that the, the point of change of ownership, if it's through foreclosure, is what I was talking about. If we talk about the foreclosure process. Now, during the foreclosure process, there could be some irresponsible activity on that property, even though the lender does not own it yet, or may never own it. It may be sold while in foreclosure to another party. So there's, there's two different things that are happening, two different responsible parties. In either case, the property is owned. It's owned by the person that's being foreclosed on, or it's owned by the lender if he, if he's successful in the foreclosure sale.
So it's my understanding that our process is, you know, like code enforcement will, it's gonna contact whoever the owner is anyhow for a property that may have activities within it that are, are being reported as illegal. And, or, you know, that could be construed as unsafe to, to, you know, like fire danger and things like that.
Yeah, we have those laws now.
So that, that whole issue, or that whole process right there, pretty much covers it. You know, there, it's, it's still, whether it's in the, in the foreclosure process or not, as it's transitioning into a change of ownership.
Yeah.
It's still gonna be acted upon by code enforcement. What this does is allow the county to act on putting responsibility on who is allowing this activity to happen within that property.
Chair.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify for Mr. Sagala. The requirement for, for the registration, it actually is triggered when there is a notice of default recorded on the property. So that should, that is the initial start of when this would apply.
You just touched on the basis of my concern. That's the start of the foreclosure process.
Right, and that's, and that's, that's what I'm saying, is that when, that when that happens, that's when the property would have to be registered with the county.
And who'd be responsible for registering with the county?
The property owner. So whether it is, the current property owner would be responsible for, for registering with the county upon recordation of a notice of default.
Joe Kelly, follow L's point and your point. That's the point, noticing. They don't have to respond, they're walking away. They're gonna file bankruptcy. They're gonna do whatever they need to get away from any duty to that property. You folks are now gonna be chasing without, unless you're going to be putting in, within your noticing paragraphs or information, that the county will, or if it's with the, what county council was talking about. Once it's noticed, then is that noticing required, recorded to the APN? So when title companies pull it up, is all this information gonna be title report information? And then you get into the concerns of banks. Can you, you know, if you have, if you have a bank loan on your property, do you know really what bank owns your property now? That's the problem in America today. So much destruction has gone on through the industry, through the 2008 or the collapse, 2006 to '08, whatever it is, collapse of our real estate industry. Nobody knows who their bank is. I talk to people routinely that don't know who it is. They just keep making the payment to somebody, and they don't know where it goes. But if they try to get information, it's very difficult to get the information. So what you're doing is, in your eyes, simplistic. In the eyes of reality, it's a tough thing to do and to be complying with the law. You pass this today, this only goes forward with those properties that go into foreclosure from when this takes place. You can't do anything, the property is behind. Thank you.
Chair, I want to, I want to correct myself. I apologize. It is not the property owner's responsibility, according to the code, the way it's written. It would be, it would be the bank, according to the way it's 8.06.730, the trustee beneficiary and/or lender to whom the benefit of notice of default in New Orleans. So it would be the, the bank's responsibility to file for the registry.
There may be some other areas that could stand for improvement?
Go ahead.
Yeah, Clyde from Valley Springs. Yeah, if I own a home and I finance it with, say, Wells Fargo. Now Wells Fargo or Wiltshire Bank, they will sell that loan. And they're posting when they sell the loan to an assignment of DITDA trust at the recorder's office, which none of them do. None of them do. And so you come up here to see who owns a property. That note could have been sold four or five times because they don't record them anymore. We have over a million foreclosures in California. It's illegal because the wrong person foreclosed on it. And no one knows who even owns the homes. So you're having a home now that someone's bought a note on, and you guys think, A, over here, the bank owns it. Well, the bank don't own it, they're servicing a note for somebody that's already sold the note three or four times. And so there's an individual out there that thinks he owns something that you guys are bringing litigation against, that he's never been known against. Because if you foreclose, if you guys come in and you do force the cleanup and stuff, and then sell the property for the cleanup cost because the person went clean it up, you're taking, that person's never been notified that owns the note. Now, it's his fault for not recording it because he's a moron. But that's what's the problem, is you're getting into this big can of worms and you're holding someone accountable for something that has never been notified. He's having action taken on a note that he owns that's never been notified. Thank you.
Any other public, any other public comments? All right, board, board comments? I'll make a motion to approve.
I second the motion.
All right, so we have a motion by Supervisor Wright, second by Supervisor Kearney. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're gonna take a, about a 10-minute break. All right, so we're back at it again with number 12. So the main reason I pulled both 12 and 13, you know, these, the issue that I have may be addressed, you know, on the, the regular agenda. I'm just not sure, that's why I wanted to pull it now. What's going on out in the field is you have, you know, 500 sites that are destroyed, and folks are wanting to get back on their property. So some people have just gone out, they've got themselves a trailer, they've moved back on there, regardless of anything that the county does or says, because they want to be on the property. And I think we can all understand that. But then there's, there's at least one case that I gotta call on, that the insurance company, they have good insurance. They're gonna buy the purchase or rent whatever the trailer to be put on the property. But they have to get permission from the county in order to do that. And so what I'm looking for is some workaround that we can develop. So people who are going through the proper channels can get back on their property and have their trailer there. And so I don't know if it's this agenda item or another agenda item down here where you guys want to, where we can discuss this.
I would think probably, this is just to continue the ongoing resolutions of a local health emergency and a local state of emergency for the county regarding the fire. We will be doing a full presentation on updates with the fire, and I would believe that it would be better discussed about time if the board chooses. We're also going to be looking at an urgency ordinance, which is number 15, regarding disaster recovery and temporary housing. So we could do it under either one of those items, Supervisor Wright.
Okay. All right, yeah, I just want to make sure that that doesn't, no, that's addressed today because I think it's really important for people. So I'm happy to move that to 15, and that was, that was my main reason for pulling those and no other issues. Okay, so, any public comments?
Joe Kelly from the unrepresented District 1. What kind of trailers are they moving on? Permanent structure, temporary structure, RVs?
Temporary structures.
Meaning what, what kind of facility to hold them in place?
Mr. Chairman, I think that's covered an item 15 on the agenda.
Yes.
What are you talking about, then?
We're talking about the continuance of a health state of emergency.
Mr. Wright brought up the issue of trailers.
Right, and, and what we said is that that's best to be discussed under 15.
Okay, then I'll wait for 15. Thank you, sir. I didn't quite understand where you were going with it.
Right.
I can just comment on item number 12. Jason Bates with Calaveras County Environmental Management Agency. And just to, so, because I think we'll have some discussion in item number 15. And the reason for item number 12 is that due to the conditions from the Butte fire and the potential of hazardous waste that exists on the properties and, and in the ash is why, and the need to necessitate and facilitate assistance for the cleanup to protect public health and the environment is why we continue that local state of emergency for number 12. So I just want to make that, make sure that's clear for the record. Thank you. Thank you.
But Jason, just to, to clarify, um, by passing this resolution doesn't necessarily stop you from, uh, the discussion that I brought up before?
No.
Okay.
No, no.
Confusing, Jim.
Joe Kelly again, what, um, our environmental health director just brought up hazardous waste on property, can that be discussed under this issue?
It's, it's.
The issue, the issue of this then is how did, this hazardous waste issue on properties, how did this go and become the construction idea that it is now where there's somebody out there that's the top dog, one or two operational organizations that are the top dogs and everybody else has to go with them? And why wasn't it brought before the board for a bidding process of some sort to find out how this is rather than the subsequent, and I don't know what the subsequent process was, to put these people to do these organizational things for this hazardous waste removal? If you could please explain that, that'd be sure be, that would answer a lot of questions I get phone calls about. Thank you.
So with the local health emergency and the hazardous waste that exists at properties, it gives the, and the declared health emergency gives Cali PA and their department Toxic Substance Control and their contractors and federal EPA and their contractors to remove household hazardous waste from the property. So that's the first step in this, in the process. The next step, which began yesterday and is through the MOU that the county signed with Cal Recycle is to remove the debris and ash, is to work with Cal Recycle, their contractor, and then subcontractors underneath them to start the debris removal process. We're starting off this week with operations, starting out slow, getting debris, debris removal going. We have, um, a class that started today for local contractors to participate for the forty hour HazWhopper training to participate in the debris and ash removal. And so a lot of the local contractors have contacted our department. We had a meeting last Thursday to discuss the contracting between the state and the state contractor and the local contractors to facilitate that for those local contractors that were interested in the process. So we've been, the forum's been open, including local contractors in the process and as, as the debris removal and, and training, local contractors receive the required training that will be, um, they will be implemented and participating in the program in the, in the next couple of weeks. Any more questions?
Yeah, so it's my understanding that the goal is to make sure that these folks are properly trained in what they're dealing with and so that's why the local contractors are being trained. And, um, the contractors that have been, from what I understand, that have been, um, brought in with Cal Recycle have already had the, the training and experience and in order to get this thing moving a little bit quicker, um, you know, the, that's, that's how it started so we can, we can move on with this thing and, and get her done. But from what I understand, the, um, the goal by training these contractors, and there was, shoot, there was a standing room only at that meeting last Thursday for the local contractors being there. They understood what the requirements are going to be and, and if they want to choose to be in that, involved in that process, then, you know, I don't see anybody stopping them. They, um, they plan on putting twenty-six different teams together within how many months or weeks?
They'll have those in place by the end of October.
So that's twenty-six different, uh, teams of contractors, um, moving on this project because there is a lot of debris to be removed and, and that has to be done in a particular way, so. I mean, that process, from what I've seen so far, uh, works pretty good in theory. I guess we'll find out how quick it moves, but, um, you know, it's the safest way for a lot of these property owners to get their, quickest and safest way to get their, um, debris removed because everything that we buy nowadays, TVs, chairs, everything, has chemicals and heavy metals and all kinds of hazardous waste in it and it's all there. So it has to be removed with care.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify a little bit, the removal of hazmat materials as we're experiencing, OSHA certifies, certifies that every worker, every employee has to be HazWhopper trained and certified, has a minimum forty-hour course if your boots on the ground. It also applies to the transportation of hazmat material. Those folks that are transporting, uh, have to be certified to do that. So this is why we're having our training classes and it's moving quite quickly compared to the private industry. I was involved in that with our hazmat construction company remediation. Believe me, folks, this process would take weeks in the private sector. They're doing things in days that it takes weeks to do. So I commend the folks involved in this.
And just a little clarification for the board. It's state law and our own county code and operate, emergency operation plans that requires a review of the local, um, health emergency and the local state of emergency every fourteen days. So basically this item will come back on the agenda with, um, every, every board meeting until we determine there is no longer a state of emergency or a health emergency.
Okay, excellent. Any other public comments? Okay, can I have a motion, please? Make a motion to approve?
Second the motion.
Is that twelve and thirteen?
Yes. So I have a motion by Supervisor Wright, second by Supervisor, who was it?
Kearney.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So I should take care of that. Regular agenda. Number fifteen, County Council, urgency ordinance adding disaster recovery chapter to the zoning code, forfeits vote.
Um, okay, um, my office worked with planning and environmental health and the building department, um, to draft an urgency ordinance. Part of it was in response to the executive order, part of it was in response to the need for temporary housing within the county because of the Butte fire. Staff is here to answer specific questions about the urgency ordinance. It would require forfeits vote of the board and if this is something that the board would like to see long-term or permanent, uh, we would go through the channels to, um, bring it forward in the regular process as far as, um, introducing it and then bringing it back at a subsequent meeting for adoption. The specifics of the urgency ordinance, I would, I would defer to, to staff that were much more hands-on in the actual drafting of it.
Okay.
Good morning, Peter Mauer, Planning Director. I work closely with Jason, Jeff White from our, from the building department as well as Jeff Kowits from Public Works to try to craft something that would provide as quick relief as we can for those who lost their home and ability to get back on the property in a safe and efficient manner. We've relaxed our standards quite a bit in order to allow that to occur. There are some concerns about the hazardous waste that's still on site, people, you know, being in there and getting exposed to, um, material. And I know there's an issue about people moving back on immediately before the toxic wastes are removed and ash is removed. It's probably something we'll need to discuss. I would recommend that we once, you know, if this is adopted, that we do move forward and make this a permanent part of our ordinance so that if we have another emergency, which hopefully we never do, but, you know, it'd be good to be prepared in the event there is another similar emergency, um, that we don't have to, you know, we can be, as soon as an emergency is declared, these rules go into effect. This was modeled after Shasta County as well as El Dorado after the Angora fire. They adopted similar kinds of provisions in a way to, to help out the, the folks that are affected. I happened to have a meeting with planning directors from around the state last week and they all thought this was a really excellent idea to have something in place beforehand, before the emergency exists, so. But before you today is the adoption of the urgency ordinance that would provide some immediate relief and Jason and Jeff are here if you have any questions of any of us.
Okay. Thank you for working on this so hard. I know that all of you have been putting in a lot of hours. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So I guess that's, uh, you know, to start off with is the question of how can we do a, a workaround? So, you know, what's happening out there is that there's people on the sites already and there's people living there without, you know, any of our permission because it's where they live. So, uh, they're already out there. So what I'd like to add is, is a clause in here that allows for the sign-off on, uh, the trailers to be placed before the, before the cleanup, not the hazardous cleanup, but the, but the Cal Recycle process because as, as many people as we're going to have on the ground doing this and as fast as it is going to go, I know it's going to go fast in the future. However, uh, in the meantime, there's people need to live somewhere and so I'd like to be able to put a clause in here that says something to the effect of, um, the environmental health officer upon request of the landowner could go out and, and review the site and approve, uh, that trailer being placed there. So there was an official way of doing it rather than people just doing it, you know, unofficially. So can you, uh, help me with that?
Jason Bateser with Calvres County Environmental Health. So this was, uh, discussed at length with, with the team that looked at the ordinance and also discussed with Cal Recycle folks. The, one of the things is, once we let people back in, I know that people are going back on the property, um, a lot of, even though the household hazardous waste is removed, we're still seeing some areas where the ash is forty percent asbestos, there's a lot of lead, there's a lot of, if they use treated wood, copper chrome arsenate in the ash. So there's these toxic and heavy metals in the ash. So that's the concern with getting people back on the property. Times that ash can become airborne during a heavy wind event, we're not out there making, ensuring that mitigation measures are in place. We have a declared health emergency based on these sites, so we receive assistance from the state to properly clean up the properties and, and protect our communities at the same time. The other issue is, is that if they move it off the property, how are these people, and I'm, there's, there's probably ways, but the septic is usually right next to where the, the building structure was, the septic tank. So now, and, and they're well, you know, a hundred feet away from that septic area. How are these people with the temporary housing then are going to dispose of their liquid waste and also have water coming in? And, and that's been a concerned, you know, a secondary concern, primary concern is protecting them from the hazards at the site. You know, we had people, uh, driving through last week and, you know, there's people on the property, we can't stop that. But that's also not us allowing it and there is a site where there's kids playing right next to ash and they, staff pulled over and talked to them and educated the people on the hazards and it's just not, the, the metals too in it. I mean, the ash is, you know, it gets into our lungs and packs if you have, uh, you know, if you're sensitive to, you know, if you have asthma, COPD, other pulmonary issues. So there's all these concerns and so when we start talking about exceptions, you know, mitigation measures, distances, um, it's, there's other complexities that come into place, uh, just besides the ash, but then we're talking proper sanitation standards for the septic's, you know, for the liquid waste and, and the, and the water. So, um, you know, I, I reached out to Lake County, uh, and see what they were doing there too and they had kept a, a, uh, same direction than we're going in, um, but on those big properties, twenty acres and more, they were looking at it from a one-time, you know, exception, you know, go out and look at the property. My issue is too with staff, um, I have five REHSs and not to take away trying to get people back on the property, but right now they're all out with FEDPA and DTSC, um, with leading as the county liaison and, and performing the household hazardous waste removal at the sites. So the staffing and going out and inspecting these sites individually, and I, again, it's not to get people back on the property, but again, it's staff resources then where we may be asking for mutual aid or to look at if that's the direction that the board takes because, you know, every new thing that comes into place, it's, yeah, so.
And I understand what you're saying, it all makes perfect sense, right? I mean, what you've said, it's, it's a perfect argument, but when I have people calling me saying that, you know, they want to go back onto their property and, and they want to do it the legal way, and then, I mean, my only answer is like, well, the county's not going to sign off on that. And they're like, well, what about my neighbors that are already there? You know, and so to me, it's a, uh, I know it's going to be challenging from a staff perspective and individual perspective, but I don't think you're going to have a huge, and maybe I'm wrong, a huge avalanche of, of personal requests. And so what I would like to do is give it a shot and see how it works for two weeks and then just come back and, and review it.
I mean, there's a lot of properties out there that don't even fit the mold of what you're talking about because one, they don't have the, the space or their site access where the pad is, is where the road is and everything else is, is steep. And so, you know, with that opening up, you know, somebody can say, well, this neighbor was able to put a trailer up, why can't we put it, another trailer right here? And when the debris removal teams, I mean, uh, you understand that process of the number of trucks and tractors out there and, and people not being in that zone of, of debris removal and, and having a trailer so one, they can facilitate, you know, the proper cleanup and also not impact, you know, public health.
I hear, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
What I, what I'm saying is instead of, of saying we can't do it, um, let's go ahead and try to do it and then if it doesn't work, we can come back and say it didn't work. I'd much rather do that than be like, these are the reasons we can't do it, you know? Because this is, this is not, I mean, if this is an ordinary situation.
Oh, yeah.
We wouldn't be here, right? So, but this is an extraordinary situation and that's why I think we have to take extraordinary measures and try extraordinary things to help people out the best we can. So that's what I would suggest is doing it for a temporary basis and there's a note from County Council here, so probably can't do that.
Supervisor Wright, I have a question of legal counsel. We are working in an active hazmat situation area where we're issuing a certificate to enter back in upon its being cleared for public access. Our exposure as a county to those properties to allow the property owner back into a known hazmat area, where do we stand on that? Even, even in a two-week program?
Sorry to interrupt you. You're the expert here on this, on the haz, on the hazmat stuff, so, uh, I, you know, I would, I would know, but it seems to me that we've cleaned the, we've done a hazmat removal on all of these sites.
There, right now, we've accomplished, uh, just over two hundred, uh, being at two hundred different properties for the removal of the household hazardous waste. So they're looking at, you know, whether it's propane tanks, lead that's been melted from solar systems or car batteries, the obvious household hazardous waste there, acetylene, oxygen, drums of oils, fuels, et cetera, if they weren't, um, you know, completely spent during the, during the fire. But they're not removing at this point in time the asbestos that's contained in the ash or any of the ash material that's in the burned structure area where we talked about, you know, the, the, the heavy metals, you know, the asbestos and whatever other hazards may be in there. There might even be spent ordinances in there. They're, they're collecting bullets, fifty caliber and less from these sites when they run into them and properly detonating them. But I know that in past experiences, depending on the property, they've ran into some nasty, you know, higher caliber ordinances in that zone of, of influence there. So that sometimes is discovered as they are removing the ash at that point in time. So there's, yes, there's a sweep of household hazardous waste taking place right now, but it doesn't remove all the hazards at the site.
The restriction in a hazmat area is basically dealing with the employees and the cleanup type situation and protecting the public from entering that potentially dangerous situation. type situation and protecting the public from entering that potentially dangerous situation. We see that in signs where Prop 65 notifies the public that there's hazardous material probably used on these premises. We've seen that in commercial buildings, things of that sort. But nevertheless, how do we restrict a property owner from going onto his own property?
I mean, right now, they can still, we're not saying you can't be on the property. I mean, that's, but this is, you know, if they, we see property owners out at the property now, whether they're, you know, looking for personal items, we're just asked that they use the proper PPE. You know, the HazWAP requirements supervisor Olivera that you speak of is for OSHA and for employees and workers. But yet, because we have a local health emergency, you know, and my duty is, as the director of environmental health, is looking at protecting public health and the environment. Not saying that, you know, supervisor Wright, you know, the potential, there may be circumstances, you know, distances possibly, but it becomes a, how, you know, what are those? You know, I mean, 300 feet, 1,000 feet, locations, sanitation standards, all these other things coming into play. But I throw that out there, so, these are all the discussions that I've had with staff, other counties, and that have been through this process and trying to find, you know, a way, you know, ultimately, of protecting public health, and that's our goal is, you know, we have teams out there removing debris now. I know it's not, it's, I wish it was a lot faster than what it is. It's gonna be getting ramped up and gonna be, you know, we'll be having more properties cleared here in the next couple of weeks where all debris is removed. And, but I know, I understand the fact that people also wanna get back to the property, so...
I would have one question of counsel, legal counsel. Does the duty fall upon the county to properly warn the owners of properties going onto their sites of a potential hazard or an existing known hazard? And if that warning is being done by our health and safety, does that meet the requirement?
Just so I'm clear with what you're asking, is whether we have an affirmative duty to inform the property owners to not enter their parcel, and if, I'm reading into the question here.
Okay.
If we were to authorize them to, what does that, how does that expose the county? Is that what you're asking?
Well, restructure the question a little bit. Does the county have the duty and responsibility to notify a homeowner in this situation where it hasn't been cleared by health and safety, that there exists a potential dangerous hazmat situation or a known hazmat situation, and recommend that they do not enter that residence? Does that fulfill the requirement to warn the public of a potential dangerous situation?
I believe so.
Okay. And we are currently doing that now, I understand, by driving by, seeing people on property?
We've been doing it since day one.
And educating them, tell them we have potential hazmats, things of that sort. Nevertheless, we still can't prevent that owner from entering his own or her own property after that warning was issued, correct?
Correct.
I mean, we can't lock him up, throw him in jail?
No, no.
It's their property.
Yeah.
Does that answer your question, supervisor?
As long as they're not illegally disposing of hazardous material at the site.
What I would, what I'm trying to do, right, is make it so people who have to go through their insurance company to get that temporary structure paid for can get on their property before, before the cleanup crews are completely done with the site because of a timing issue. Because there's too many, there's too many sites out there, it's gonna take too long. So, people are basically not, and what I'm worried about also is that there are a lot of people that are on the edge, right, of leaving their property and just saying, forget it, you know, I'm not going back, I'm out of here. And so, that's, I mean, that is part of why I'm really pushing for this, is to get people back on their property as fast as they can, because I wanna make sure they stay and rebuild in Calverish County. And I know every day, here are more people that are not doing that. So, I wanna make sure if somebody calls me up, wants to get back on their property, that we're doing everything we can in our power to allow them to do it, hopefully legally correct. But I'm more concerned about, you know, the people getting on their property than the letter of the law here. And I think we can do a workaround so it's legal, and we just give it a couple of weeks, you know, to try it out. It may not be a big deal, there may be only a few properties out there that even request it from you, so, I don't know.
So, I think what Chris also was talking about is, I heard a couple of times that the insurance companies won't, will not let a person back on their property. They'll buy him a trailer, but they're not gonna give it to him until the county says, yeah, it's okay. And so, now they're stuck in a hotel room somewhere. So, that's a pretty big issue. To this day, right now, I have, I know of 28 people that aren't gonna rebuild. They're gone, they're gone. And it's, and I've only been talking to a select few, that's 28 families, 28 homes that are gonna be sitting there burnt and not, not reimproved. So, and that number's gonna grow if we don't try to figure out some way to allow folks to at least get up and safely get onto their place to move on with their lives. So, I guess it depends on, you know, how many we want to go. We have the power to make it happen for them safely, hopefully. What we experienced yesterday was a small footprint of a place that was being done. Property owners were standing there while they were cleaning it up, you know. Granted, we weren't there the whole time, and I'm pretty sure that, you know, when they started scooping stuff into the truck, they probably weren't hanging around.
No.
I wouldn't either, you know, but, so, it's a matter of, I guess, communicating well with the folks and see if we can accommodate some of these folks to get back on their place. I realize the dangers in a lot, in a lot of it, you know, they're gonna be on, there's a bunch of them out there right now.
Another.
Bunch. And it's really cool, it's really neat to know that people are actually willing to work with the county to try to do it the right way than to just circumvent the whole system and do it the wrong way, which is what's happening in a very big number right now because of the situation. And, you know, there's a lot of people out there that are impatient, they're traumatized, they aren't, a lot of them aren't thinking clearly, and they just wanna get back to what it was. And it'll probably, you know, in some cases, will never be what it was, but, but I think it's our duty to try to help them as much as we can to get to that, to that end goal.
And I agree, and I think there's other, too, that, there's other aspects in the ordinance that maybe Peter and Julie can speak of too, that besides people going on their own properties, but also other options that may be available to them. And I understand the importance of people wanting to get on their own properties, I get that. But also, I, there might be some other, you know, there's other items that are addressed in the ordinance where people may be able to place trailers, that is addressed. I know, Peter, if you wanna speak to that a little bit, so, it's, you know, the public knows, and it's to discuss what other options are up there.
Before we go, though, I do wanna, I wanna try to wrap this, this up. So, can we put a, can we word, put some word in there? If we just gave you direction to do that for a couple of weeks, would that be sufficient?
Can I ask you a question? And I'm not, I know supervisor Edson and supervisor Wright, you're closer to this than anybody because of the homes lost in your districts. Are you concerned that this is not going to be a fast enough recovery, this ordinance? It's too restrictive? I'm getting a little lost in what you're trying to tell me, in according to what I've read.
So, this ordinance is, there's a lot going on in that ordinance. So, that's beside the point, right? But the ordinance, you know, behind you right now, and the issue we're dealing with on the ground is that there's 500 or so, you know, homes out there. And people are waiting for the, for our cleanup process to be able to come back and start rebuilding. So, but that's, they're not gonna be, there's some sites, they're not gonna be there for weeks or months, you know? And so, they're stuck, because they can't bring their, if they wanna go through the official process, they can't bring their trailer and live on the property right now according to our, according to our county process. So, what I'm doing is trying to make, so people can legally do that instead of just doing it, you know, without county approval. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, no, it does. I'm wondering if this is two weeks too soon, you know? Even, no, it's not.
No, we just need to...
Because you're looking for a way to expedite the process right now. And I agree with that 100%.
But they can bring a tent on and cap up.
Now, according to me, they can.
Well, because this talks about...
They can't do, they can't, they can't stay on their property at all legally.
Right.
So, what I'm saying is that, but there, every property has unique conditions. There's, like, some of them, in fact, they have houses that are still on the property that were right, that somebody's living in right next to the burnt-out building, but they legally can't bring a trailer in there and live there on the property, even though there's somebody already living on the property.
Okay.
So, that's what I'm saying, there's, and in some properties, you know, there's huge properties and...
So, how do we help that?
That's, you got it, yeah. That's how I'm trying to figure out.
Okay. I'm with you.
Taking a real-life scenario, let's say we have a home that's located on an acre of land, and the home's lost, but there's a footprint, and I'm a homeowner up in that area, and I wanna go over and put my travel trailer or my whatever RV or something on this footprint, but it hasn't been cleared for entry certificate from our Board of Health, but it's removed away from what's the hot zone and a hazmat situation that you may have identified or may not have identified. Legally, there's no way we can stop the owner from doing that, is there?
Correct.
But for those folks that wanna do things the right way, and all people involved, the county, the homeowners, our agencies and things of that sort, would there be some type of process that could say, okay, we're gonna go up and take a look at this footprint, but that's gonna be a hot zone, so you can't go over until we clear that, but you can bring your motor home and put on this footprint? Is that what we're talking about?
That's what we're talking about, yeah.
I could've said that 15 minutes ago.
I thought I did.
Can that happen?
I mean, that's, we've talked about this, you know, understanding there is still hazards at the site, okay?
Understand.
And so, the county has to understand that, and it's just not with the ash, we've seen septic tanks where the lids are melted, okay? Dog, kid goes running across, it's separated, falls in a septic tank. I'm just saying, there's other issues that are at all these sites. And, and once you, the county says, okay, you can put it over here, I've seen people with trailers, kids playing in ash, dogs running through the footprint. I mean, that's the reality of it.
That is the reality of it. But going back to our question of counsel, go ahead. I thought you wanted to say something.
I just, I do. I wanna clarify, as the board knows, there was an executive order that was issued by the governor, and, and part of that and the purpose behind that, the county's been working with HCD with that as well, is to encourage off-site options, off-site people to keep the property owners safe and have a place for them to temporarily reside while the house or while the site is being cleaned. So, then when it's certified, they can relocate back to their home in a safe manner. That's the whole point of the executive order, is to loosen things and to allow for off-site temporary housing to be a lot more accessible during this time. So, I just wanna encourage the board to remember that, one, there is a local health emergency that you just continued, and that although the county can't force people to not go back to their property, to be mindful of what the county authorizes or deems approved by the county.
What does off-site options mean?
Peter?
So, the draft ordinance provides for several different options. There could be, you know, sort of impromptu trailer parks created under the auspices of HCD in the county. An individual property owner could put up a neighbor, they could put a neighbor on their property, which is not something we normally permit, but we're gonna allow this due to the emergency. Or there could be conversions of existing, you know, structures, motels, or things like that, that would be more permanent type of housing, you know, not permanent, but longer-term emergency housing. So, we try to create a variety of different mechanisms that would allow people to have a place to stay in the community, both on private property or in commercial land, places like that.
Then they'll be moving twice in two to four weeks?
Well, we don't, I mean, the problem that we have is we don't know how long it's gonna take to clean up. I mean, in some cases, it's just gonna be months before they actually get to their, to the site.
And then we also have the fact, I'm sorry, but supervisor Wright, that how are you gonna stop a property owner from going on his own property? Even with all the education and warning that you can provide those folks? It's an enforceable act. We can't prevent that. We can advise against it for health and public safety, their safety. Then again, where's our enforcement capabilities for that?
So, we can come up with some alternative language in the ordinance, sort of look at some, knowing that this, anticipating this might be an issue. We've developed some language, and I think if the majority of the board wants to have some provision in the code that allows more immediate occupancy of the property, then we can modify the provision slightly to accommodate that. And so, I guess we'd be asking for, you know, some understanding from the board after maybe we've seen public testimony as to, you know, whether or not that's appropriate, and you wanna stay, include that in the draft, the final language of the ordinance.
Okay. I would like it to be a consideration, because there are some areas out there where folks can do that, and right now, it's a cookie-cutter approach. You know, I know, I know people that have 20-acre parcels that have access to power that's away from their site, quite a bit away from their site actually, and their septic, which is away from the burn site, and they are stuck not being able to get onto their property with, you know, alternative means of staying in some temporary housing because of, because they can't get a permit. So...
I think we, right, we have a majority that agrees with that idea.
I would agree with that. One quick note, supervisor Wright, supervisor Edson, is there any way to determine how many people fall in this category by putting out some type of inquiry? I mean, we're talking two people, 20 people, 200 people?
We have, to date, we have about 490 people signed up in, with the county and state cleanup program. All those may not be, may be just an outbuilding and not their permanent residence, or their permanence, the residence house there. Also, we have people, hopefully tomorrow, we'll be able to release our self-certification forms, so those property owners that are going to go through the cleanup process and not sign up through the county-state program, but they have to meet the same standards and the same, and the same processes and standards apply to that process, but they could hire a contractor and pay for that themselves if they just don't get the funding that is going through the county-state program. So, just to make that clear, so how many people are out there in this? I mean, there's a lot of people potentially out there in this. Are all of them gonna have the property footprint that will be able to work for this potential? Maybe, probably not. But there's gonna be a lot of people that may not even, that may not even wanna do it, because they'll be looking at their, at, you know, they don't wanna be on the property until it is cleaned up. Personally, that's probably where I'd fall in, you know?
Yeah, and I think...
And so, that's, but that...
I think that's a majority.
Yeah.
So, I think that's a majority of people.
So, yeah, and, you know, there's a lot of folks that are pretty comfortable where they are, but there's a lot of folks that aren't.
Yeah.
And the only place they have is where they ran from.
So, can you guys write, like to be able to get that passed today? So, if you could, is there a chance you could, since you, it seems like you may already have a draft?
Since you have offered.
If you could do that before the end of this meeting, so we could bring it back? Is that, great. Thank you.
I just have a comment. I'm not, I'm not supportive of this idea. You know, really struggling a lot here with all of the proclamations and ordinances and everything else that we have to consider, but, you know, as I review this, you know, from my perspective, you know, we as a county need to be protective of the health and safety, not of the landowner, but the folks in and around the area and the folks that are going to be going onto this property. And I'm finding that, you know, yes, it's going to take some time, it's a huge tremendous disaster, it affected a lot of people. What I've seen in the last month is a tremendous effort to, to move forward and helping people move forward in a very quick way, and this ordinance truly reflects that, because we didn't have something like this before, and here we are today considering that urgency ordinance to allow that temporary housing. But I'm just really concerned, it's an area that, you know, we, we don't know, there's a lot of unknowns, and there's a lot of health risks. And I think that if we make a two-week or thirty-day amendment to say this or that, or allow people on, you know, temporary, you know, while we clean up or investigate or whatever, it's just going to open up a, a can of worms and so potential harm to the county and those that are helping us. And I also feel that if we don't go through proper channels, we might jeopardize some of our funding and resources that we're getting from the state at national level, and I would hate to jeopardize that. You know, what I'm finding is people make choices, you know, we've heard that people don't have insurance, that people didn't have permitted buildings, and so on and so forth, and people make choices as to what they do and why they do it, and, you know, I'm not here to say that was a right or wrong choice, that was their choice. And if people want to go on to their property and ignore this kind of thing, or not wait, everybody has to wait, and I think there's options for people to, to pursue to maybe get on quicker or not, and again, those are their choices. But as I look at this ordinance, I think it's a, a real health and safety concern overall, and I think that we have to, you know, do it right and try to do it right the first time, and not give any kind of waiting period to allow people to do something that would create potential harm to the public.
Okay, any public comments?
Can I interject from a, somebody who's not involved in the fire? I'm not a victim of it. I don't know if you folks noticed, but in a newspaper recently, it's a whole bunch of attorneys offering their help to look for somebody to sue, okay? And I don't want to be one of the schmucks who end up paying for it. And I'm not just talking about me, but you're not going to get nothing out of me, I have nothing, but the whole county has a, I know your concentration, Chris, I agree with you. I understand your position, but, but the great legal minds we have in this room, if somebody wants to go back to their property, is there any reason why they couldn't sign a disclaimer? They don't have to, but you present it to them, hey, if you go in there, you got to sign that you realize there's hazmat problems, poison, water, whatever you say, you sign it off, because there's a bunch of vultures, chicken hawks out there. They're looking for ways to get rich, and they're called lawyers, and they're not on top of my Christmas tree. But try to minimize your liability. Sign it, you realize there's a danger, you fully realize that, you take, and it's your property, you take full responsibility for it. There's no, we don't want to have a recourse. These folks trying to do their best, and they have the reasonable, rational ways to do it. But as you said, people are going to go up there on property, there's not a damn thing you can do about it. But, cover your butt. Hey, you're not supposed to be on your property, we totally against you doing your property, sign off. And we're not going to bug you. Soon as we can, we will come and help you clean it up, or whatever, or you have the response to clean it up, but sign off on a disclaimer. And they probably will try to avoid the hassle, you just sign it off. If they're such a dumbass, you know, hey, they're going to do it. And if you're going to start pushing for their own benefit, you're going to get a pushback. But if you totally disclose that, hey, this is a hazardous material, you can get sick, just like this pack of cigarettes, it's in my pocket, it's hazardous for my growth and my brain, I'm still going to smoke it. And that's my decision, and some of those people on their property, they're going to go back, at least cover your, cover me or cover your constituent from lawsuit. I, I don't believe all the ass that's going over here, they're going to come and help you, class X in lawsuits. And they're not going to be after me, it's going to after for the whole county. Get some kind of disclaimer on there, please.
Could I comment on that, Mr. Chairman?
No, can we just, go ahead.
Morning, Marty Crane, this is an excellent conversation that we're having here. Earlier, I wanted to address the fact that we're talking about saying, no, you can't, yes, you can, giving them permission, but giving them another option, which is being addressed in the temporary housing, I think is an excellent idea. I love the idea that, of keeping it in their community, because maybe they, yes, they want to be on their property, but I think more than anything, they don't want to leave their community, and where their support is and their resources are. And so I, I really appreciate that, keeping it in that community, but I also wanted to address something that Debbie was, and thank you for articulating that so well, but one thing that I haven't heard is that our staff has specific expertise with regard to helping us as a board to protect the health and safety of the community, and that's what our main goal is. And there's a reason why those insurance companies will not allow, will not pay for a trailer until the county signs off, they don't want the liability, so they're passing that off to the county. So if we say yes and give them a permit, then we're taking all that liability of what happens to these people and the community as a result of that. So there's a reason why they won't do it, and we should be mindful of that, thank you.
House of Commerce, Taxpayer Association. Michael had a good comment, what's the scope of this? What's happening, are we talking a few people, thirty people, a hundred people, two hundred people? One question I have, just how many of the victims of the fire have insurance? I heard it's three percent, somebody else said it might be fifteen, somebody else said it's much higher than that. Okay, that's number one question. I assume you develop a database of who these people are and how to contact them. The next question is, of the insurance policies, do some of them or all of them pay the cost for cleanup after the fire? I had a rental property in Douglas Flat have a fire with a hundred percent damage, and what was involved was getting a demolition permit, and that removed all the burnt materials and, and down to the foundations. We had to get a, a letter from, from a engineer to certify the foundations were okay, and then we contracted with a contractor to rebuild a structure, and all, and this all was covered by the insurance. So the question is, number one, just how many of these properties are not insured? And two, does the insurance pay for the cleanup? And then the third concern I think we have is that we don't want to interfere with people's rights to go to their property, even if what we think is better for them and what they think, we, we, we don't want to do that, but Peter's suggestion of a disclaimer, it could be very simple, that would absolve the county of any responsibility for any harm that may befall upon the property owner because of something on the property that could hurt him. That all makes sense. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Thank you, Chairman. In response to Peter, Peter's statements, in our original conversation, this is where I was going with legal counsel, maybe a release or something of that effect, or disclaimer is, is set for those folks that desire to enter their properties against the warnings of potential hazmat situations, would that help situations at all?
It helps environmental health sign off on it, and I'm, I'm happy with that.
Right back on you, Jason. And I do have some other issues with, with this particular agenda item, but I'll save that until.
Go for it, because we were, we're on to that now.
After reviewing the executive order issued by the governor, I noticed that there's a couple of issues in the draft permitted, actually submitted by our staff, and one big one that pops out is the executive order is for a three-year period. And in our proposed ordinance, there's a two-year period with a review process for the third year. Can you explain why we did that?
Good morning, Julie Moss Lewis, Deputy County Counsel. The ordinance was, the proposed ordinance was drafted before I was aware of the executive order, I spoke with HCD Council about our proposed ordinance, which would be capturing not just the Butte Fire, but subsequent emergencies as well. The executive order, by all admissions of HCD, is more intense than what we would expect in most, even in most disasters, and so to the extent that the executive order conflicts with the ordinance, the executive order would control, and we have a clause in the proposed ordinance that says so, and there, that, we decided it would be better not to draft an entire ordinance just to a single executive order, but just to simply work with HCD with respect to anything that would conflict. So our ordinance, for example, would allow the board by resolution to extend its terms to a third year, in this case, we know the executive order will be for at least, you know, for a total of three years. So with respect to mobile homes, manufactured homes, and recreational vehicles, we know that the three-year period will be a full three-year period, even if the board does not come back to extend the ordinance with respect to any other of its parts. The ordinance is broader than the executive order in that it also covers things like stick-built emergency shelters, and anticipates some types of measures that maybe were not part of the executive order. Also, HCD with respect to standards for cleanup and standards of, minimal standards for waters, sewer and power, HCD agrees with the county's recommended ordinance as far, their preference, or what they anticipate actually was a prioritization of off-site housing while the cleanup was happening, so just so the board's aware of, of how those discussions have gone.
Yeah, Julie, can you identify what HCD is?
Oh, HCD is the State Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you.
And their attorneys were part of, drafted the executive order.
Also, something just to, you know, for discussions with the state folks, you know, a lot of these fam, a lot of these owners out here have animals, livestock, small, you know, farms and that type of thing. So when you're considering, or when they're considering future fires, because they're going to happen in rural areas, you know, that's a consideration, if you're going to have off-site housing, you know, people are not going to want to do that if they do have animals that they want to get back and take care of, so I think that's something to throw out there, so they, they understand the rural versus the more suburban kind of fires.
Right, I mean, I, there's, I'm, there's definitely, I'm sure, some aspects of the executive order that don't necessarily dovetail perfectly with the rural community, I just think the general feeling was that the human health was the, was the priority, so.
I have a question, because it does say in the, and I, I mean, I'd like the, this part of the ordinance too, is, you know, public sewers, it says public sewer system. So the temporary replacement housing shall be connected to an approved sewer, sewage disposal system, meeting one of the following criteria, so public sewer, existing onsite sewage disposal system certified, our temporary holding tank with a contract with pumping company for regular pumping, what about if they're living in a motorhome?
I think I will allow either Peter or Jason to address that, since that particular technical language did not come from.
So the motorhome has limited capacity for liquid waste, so what the ordinance is, is if they had a holding tank, if it, if there was a spot where, you know, there was, I mean, however many mobile homes, ten or fifteen, that they could put in a, a temporary storage for liquid waste and then have that pumped out by, by waste haulers, so that's, that's what that means.
So what, I mean, what if it's a mobile home on a single parcel for, you know, a person or a couple living in it?
So if, oh, was I talking about a different section? Sorry, sorry, well then, Peter.
So, yeah, for an individual mobile home or RV on a property, they could either connect to their septic system, and there's ways to do that, or they could have a holding tank, and I know that we allow that for a homeowner construction of a temporary construction trailer, and so they can have a special holding tank, you know, a company comes bi-weekly, pumps it out, so it's, that's an option that could be used, if they're not able to hook directly up to the septic system, or they're not connected to public sewer.
So the question is, is, you know, like, somebody may just want to stay in their mobile home, or, or their RV, and then they could drive to empty the tank out, just like they're camping. Is that not available in this ordinance?
I don't see any reason why they couldn't do that, if that was going to be a, you know, as far as, you know, for, you know, in my mind, if they're going to drive, that, that's a lot of, I mean, they could do that, but once they, you know, establish that residency on the property, you know, our closest disposal, I guess, would be, was it Hogan or Maloney's for liquid waste for the RV, so, I mean, that is an option that they could have to do that at that point in time, so.
Okay.
I think we anticipated that most people would not, once they had their trailer established, that they're, you know, it's one thing you're camping in a place for a couple of days or a week, you're going to move on, but if you're going to be there for a couple of months, then, you know, you're going to.
You're going to have a portable storage tank on your.
Yeah, you know, some, some of these folks, it's their only form of transportation too, right now, and so they're driving to the grocery store and, in this thing, you know, there's, there's a few people out there like that, this is all they have left.
And there's some that don't even have the luxury of a bathroom.
That is correct.
That is correct. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Couple more issues. Gentlemen, I think maybe Mr. Maurer can answer this question. Addressing the issue of any flood zone on these temporary placements of these homes, is that something that needs to be addressed in this ordinance?
It is addressed, we did have a meeting with FEMA, with the flood control people that was scheduled long in advance with the fire, and one of their concerns is that flooding potential is exacerbated after a fire like this. They have recommended, and I've included in the language, that any housing be located outside of any flood hazard area, it's designated on the maps.
Okay. So, yeah, that says, replacement structure shall not be located in designated special flood hazard area.
Right.
And one last issue, it may have been already answered, is there going to be a problem with proof of ownership? Some of these properties go back to families that have been there for an extended period of time, multiple fifty, sixty, seventy years. Is there any issue with identifying who is the proper owner and who deserves the right to be on that property?
That is potentially an issue, any kind of permits that are issued, we do require proof of ownership, and that's sort of standard requirement, so as they come in with any kind of permit activity, then they would have to provide proof of ownership. We try to provide as much flexibility with that, using, you know, whatever records that we have, knowing that many people lost all of their own records, so, you know, looking at what county records are available, any other kind of information, assist in using, in providing that.
Yeah, so many of these homeowners, property owners, or a lot of them anyhow, have been, you know, here before, well, their, their whole family's been here for decades, and, and sometimes, you know, over a hundred years. I can pretty much guarantee you that the homes that are just rubble right now may not have been identified as a, a structure that was permitted, because it wasn't permitted over a hundred years ago, and, so what about those folks? And there's, there's a bunch of them out there.
If we can verify that they predated our requirements for permits, then, you know, that would be considered a legal non-conforming use and be able to be. they would be considered a legal non-conforming use and be able to be reconstructed.
So how do they verify that? If everything they had was burnt up in their house?
We can look at aerial photos, we can look at our own, our own records, you know, were permits issued, but how long ago was it assessed? There's a lot of information available that we could use to assist a property owner in establishing whether or not those were pre-existing structures.
Okay. I have a kind of a follow-up question on that end of it. So when the, in this ordinance, if, say, you were living in a house that was not permitted, it seemed like this ordinance wouldn't apply to you?
You would need to, well, you could still have the temporary residents come back. But to replace that on a permanent basis, you would need to get a building permit and bring it, essentially bring it into compliance.
Okay. But, but as far as this temporary residence goes, you're still gonna issue the temporary? Because, because the way I read it, and, you know, I probably read it wrong, was that it, it wouldn't allow you to do that if you didn't, if you were not on a site that was a permitted building?
No, if you can demonstrate that there is a residence there, whether or not it was permitted or not, we would allow someone to go back to have a permanent replacement.
Right.
To meet current, current code. So if you're a non-conforming structure, say it didn't meet the setbacks or something like that, they could replace it as it was before, same footprint, basically. But if it were essentially new permit today, they would need to meet whatever the current standards are to have the permanent replacement housing. But we would permit temporary housing.
Okay.
For the period of the timeframe of the ordinance.
Great, thanks for the clarification.
So how much is the, the temporary use permit gonna be for?
Temporary use permit is for off-site housing, and it's a fairly nominal fee. I don't know, I don't recall what, what it is, but it's...
So the, the site that they're gonna build on is the site? And then they're living in a temporary structure off-site, they're gonna get a permit for that?
If the, in order for the, for an entity to construct like a, you know, temporary housing, a trailer park or, you know, FEMA park, that we would want a temporary permit that identifies, you know, how they're providing for public water and sewer.
Yeah, I understand. But I was talking about just a private property owner.
So, the executive order for the temporary housing on private property wa, suspends those permit fees for the temporary housing? And I want to make sure everybody understands it's temporary housing only.
State and local?
That is the information we got from the HCD attorney, that's correct.
The suspend, so does that mean that they're gonna have to pay it, like, once they build their house?
Only if they stay there longer than three years.
But if they don't, if they build their house within three years?
And the temporary housing is removed.
Then there's no, they don't pay?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I, I do have another question too. Sorry. So, now, this takes effect, this temporary housing is county-wide or just the people who, just the properties that were burned?
Just the properties that were burned.
So when you talked about before, neighbors, you know, setting up, what if that neighbor wasn't burned?
But this provides for someone to, house someone whose home was lost on a property that wasn't, wasn't damaged.
So, so it does, so anywhere in the county, if you live in Coppropolis and you have a property and you want to put, you know, your, your friend up on a temporary basis, then they would come in and apply for the temporary permit?
Right.
And they would say, look, he got burned out, his or she, and that's how it would work. So it does affect the whole county?
It does.
Okay.
So is there a way that, that we can amend this to just, you know, get rid of the two-year thing and put a three-year, a three-year notice in there? Because I see the two-year is in there quite a bit, and I, I gotta tell you, there's a lot of folks, this is a big task. You'd be lucky to do it in that period of time.
I, I think Deputy County Counsel Julie Moss had said that this was an ordinance that would be dealing not only with this issue, but with future issues. And by the governor's EO and the language in this ordinance, that the county's ordinance wouldn't conflict in any way with the governor's emergency orders, that it would automatically be three years for the fire, for this fire.
Okay, for this one, okay, I get it.
Yeah, I think in reviewing the order, Chairman, it's the executive order from issued by the governor's office, that any conflict that any local ordinance would have with this, the state executive order would take precedence, so that wouldn't even be an issue. Any other questions from the board? Any more questions from the public?
I just wondered, I saw the, saw in the paper that there were a bunch of FEMA trailers that were over in Sacramento, ready to come, come here. But are they, are they thinking of putting up a temporary, temporary housing in like a trailer park type setting? Or are they only thinking of using the FEMA trailers on people's sites?
We'll be doing an update on recovery efforts regarding the Butte Fire. And one of the things that we'll be speaking to is the housing and FEMA, what FEMA will and will not do. So if you'll be here for that, we'll, we'll kind of go into that in quite a bit more detail.
Okay, thank you, look forward to it.
Marty Crane, I guess I just would like to know a little more clearly what it is that you are asking them to, how, what you're asking them to change and just to say, add some wording in there. Add some wording to do what? You know, what's the final thing, instruction that you're asking them to do?
As I understand, the majority of the board's desire is to provide an opportunity for people to get back, and we'll be drafting some language and bring back maybe after lunch that would have, you know, that everyone could see that provides for more immediate occupation of a temporary trailer.
Joe Kelly, is the county, given consideration of the concept, maybe I missed it if you did, Frogtown, the RV park, we've talked a number of times about RVs. I know it's gonna be out of the district, they're gonna have to come down and live out of their area. But if something can be arranged with them where the county would take over that whole project there, there could be a number of people in RVs that could be staying there. The other thing might be to contact the RV park just south of there and see what they might be able to do. So, there's two, two points that, and that's the only two that I know of. Isn't there one up, uh, Mountain Ranch Road, it burned down?
Well, it's Gold Strike. People have been staying out at Hogan.
Okay.
They've been staying out at Comanche.
Okay. But is, but are people also using the Frogtown facility and the other one? I know there's the amount of motorhome, fifth wheels and vehicles that the private one has unloaded recently with the leaving of the fire people and everybody else, all the other official agencies.
Yes, there's people staying at Frogtown and the RV park as well.
Is it, is it full up?
It's not full, but there are people staying.
So, but if it, could it be then that that might be recommended to these folks that want out, come on down and...
I think that's being considered, and we'll hear that later this afternoon in more detail on the update.
Thank you.
I'm still looking for clarity here. So, in essence, where, are we asking them to add verbiage in there that then says the county will now take the liability that the insurance companies will not?
We would never do that.
Well, I'm just wondering, because if we give them permission...
No, we're not doing that.
Okay, all right. We'll be interested to see what we have. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions from the public?
Back here at a lunch break.
That was a good question, Peter. Any questions from the board? All right, so, why don't we take a lunch break?
Good idea, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so we'll be back at 1:05.
Can we take a little bit longer lunch break?
1:30. We'll be back at... Yes, we're coming back at 1:30 to resume.